2023 at 7:04 PM.
Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Loelen.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner James.
Here.
Commissioner Salvino.
Here.
City Attorney Bootsis.
Here.
City Manager Garcia.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Clerk. Could we all please take a moment and bow our heads for a moment of silence? Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is Representative Salina?
No, she's not going to say.
Oh, she's not. So we're going to move that.
I'll let her.
Okay.
I can go ahead.
All right. Okay, so for item 3.1, we were supposed to have a presentation from Ford House Representatives, Hillary Crissell, but this is an item that's sponsored by Vice Mayor Loelen, and she will give us her update on it.
Yeah, we had some issues earlier with power, and there was a concern about that, and we wanted to make sure, she wanted to make sure she could actually have her constituents hear her, and I don't even know that we're actually broadcasting tonight. Is that correct? Or are we?
Are we broadcasting?
I don't know if we're even broadcasting this tonight.
Greg, are we broadcasting?
Yes.
Ralph? We're broadcasting.
Oh, okay. Well, we didn't know that we were going to be, so we rescheduled that. She's going to be here at the end of August for our next meeting instead.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, next, item 3.2, we have a presentation by Memorial Health Services, and this is sponsored by Commissioner Salvino.
Thank you, Mayor. Very happy today to bring to our city, and I'm sure that you're going to hear a great program come up. I'd like to introduce Melinda Akita.
Akiti.
She's the Chief Community Officer of Memorial Hospital. Along with her is Milin Esposito and Tim Curtin, and this is something we had discussed about, the free health care coming to Dania Beach, and I will let you go at it, Melinda, and tell us what a wonderful thing Memorial Hospital is doing for us.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. We are excited. Memorial, our new CEO, it's already a year has been in position, Mr. Scott Wester, has a dream, and the dream is to be able to provide health to everyone in the South District. You may not know that people live shorter years of life because of the zip code or the street that they live in, and that is because of lack of access. So we have decided to take our adult mobile van with our physicians, our pediatric mobile van with our pediatrician, and actually go into every single city, and the difference here is that we are going to be in the city six to eight weeks, and after that, for two years, we are going to be in the city one day a week, in the same place, with the same boat vans. We are not only going to be providing health care, but health care is more than health. It's about food insecurity, transportation. We're going to be helping those individuals access those services that is going to help their life expectancy. The interesting thing that we The interesting thing that we're doing is because we can do this, and we don't know about the outcomes. We are having a national company, actually, in the month of July, they're going to survey all of the cities. They're surveying, I think next week they're starting to survey all of the cities in the South District. And we're going to be able to get that data by city. And after two years, we're going to be, they're going to survey again to see if their health literacy has improved. And therefore, if their health literacy improved, their health also improved. One of the things that we decided, and we were thinking about the fact is that, okay, we're doing this one city at a time, we're doing their health. What about the housing? What about those other needs? And that same day, on May ninety, we're going to have a big extravaganza. I love to party, so this is going to be a big party. And we are going to have, from bounce house to everything you can think of, snow cones, whatever you can think of, music, with other, music, a party has to have a music. So we are going to have a DJ, everything sponsored by the Memorial Healthcare System, to be able to really entice the city of Dania residents to come out. And before that, at eight o'clock in the morning, we are going to do a community revitalization, meaning we are going to go to several houses and help paint them and help bring those houses back into code. We are in Dania, we are part of Dania, we have a clinic in Dania. Dania have always been our city. And now, what we want to do is to ensure that every resident in Dania is healthy and have access. So thank you so much. I'm open to any question.
Thank you very much.
If you want to. Who should I give it to?
Tommy, you touched on food insecurity. We will be giving out, we'll have a food distribution at the event on August nineteenth as well. C W Thomas Park, ten A M. to two P M. And it's for families, it's for the adults. All the residents are welcome to attend.
Okay, additionally, we recently added another benefit to the community. We're going to be giving out tablets with Wi-Fi, a hundred, approximately a hundred of them, to residents that are receiving government assistance. So that'll be available at the event as well on August nineteen. So Commissioner Salvino has the flyers, if you can pass them down, and we'll try to leave some at the desk on our way out. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for coming out tonight. You've done a great job. Got more questions? I'm sorry.
Hold on, Commissioner James, please.
Yes, thank you. Tim, I know that you've done other events, particularly in the city of Hollywood with Richard Walker, right? Bringing out your mobiles for uninsured families and children to receive immunizations and wellness checks. With going, thank you, with going back to school with that time coming up, would that also be available? I know that the mobile is going to be comprehensive in providing health care, but as far as providing immunizations for uninsured children, would that also be a part of it?
We always provide immunization in the van, and they can receive it there. But in addition to that, we are having a back-to-school fair, and I can't remember the date.
Commissioner, when is your back-to-school fair? Because I know you have one now in the city of Dania.
Commissioner Davis has one in the city of Dania.
We can get the van, we can get the van to be able to provide vaccine.
And I also have mine this month, but.
Are you back in Hollywood?
Yes, 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 yes. Oh, what was I going to ask? I forgot.
Ours is August fifth, August fifth is the one that we have, and we have it at our location in the city of Hollywood, where we're our major clinic. We have our vaccination and back-to-school with the health certificate examination, everything. But if you have a child, for example, that is on August nineteen, they can always come to the van that day, and they will get their immunization.
Okay, and lastly, I'm not sure about the resources that you all have for, like, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, but I know that I've tried in this city a lot of times to get, like, breast cancer, the mammogram vans to come. They're so difficult to come. About, I'm not sure if Memorial also offers that sort of service to come out to the city as well.
We don't have a van, a mammogram van. What we do is that we provide a screening. We can provide a screening on the adult van, and the screening is just, you know, a touch. And then what we do is that we give them a prescription, and they can actually receive it. They live in the city of Dania, and they can come to any of our hospital with that prescription and receive their mammogram.
At no cost?
At a sliding scale depending on their. If I go there, I will not be at no cost.
No, I just want to make sure before I tell the residents and they expect.
The thing is that if they are insured, the insurance will pay. If they are uninsured, they are part of our program. Remember, we have a program for our uninsured population. And so we, the person receives service regardless of ability to pay, meaning if you fall under any type of category where you are, you're a hundred percent of federal poverty level, you get free services at Memorial.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
So your event, Commissioner James, is on the fifth, no.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine to July.
Yes, Commissioner Davis is that following weekend.
And your location, Commissioner Davis?
It's three hundred North Beach Road, in front of the Quarter Deck Restaurant.
Got you. Perfect, all right. And time for.
I'll get with you.
And we have the job fair coming up, so that's.
Yes, yes.
City of Dania Beach, B S O, Coca-Cola, Memorial Healthcare System, and I think Brown College was added as well. So a lot of great opportunities for employment for Dania Beach residents, and that's this Saturday, right here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's good.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your presentation. We definitely look forward to working with you guys. All right, so next, we have proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month. And we have a video, Ralph, if you could start it, please.
When you see kids playing, it's nice to see the park being used.
That park looks fantastic. It's such an improvement.
Frank C. Tootie Adler, we can thank him for this park, really. He purchased twenty-eight acres for two hundred and eighty dollars.
Really happy to see the kids here enjoying it today.
After the construction of Lucky Fish, they'll be able to sit, look at the ocean, look at their children.
This is what our community needs. This is what kids need to come and be able to play and enjoy their day.
Here we go. Three, two, one, Happy New Year!
All right, Malaluka, this is what kids need to do instead of being on the phone. So I am so glad that we are outside playing, getting some fresh air, enjoy it, your neighborhood deserves it.
So happy with the way this park looked while we were open, and here we are.
I hope this community really enjoys this park as much as I love the design, and I can't wait to continue to see the development of the rest of the parks.
Mildred Jones, who this park is named after, she was a longtime Dania resident.
A park with water view back here, but now it's also a functional park in that you have the exercise equipment for everybody to use. It's a lovely place.
This is a real pleasure, and my family is really proud.
By the time all this is said and done, we will have invested over fifty-five million dollars in parks.
Dania Beach is the perfect place to see it, live it, love it.
Great, great video, wonderfully done. Can I please ask our Parks and Rec Department Deputy Director Cassie, please come up? Yeah, and then, you want me to read it, or you want to read it? Okay, yeah, no. Let's change it up. You want to read it? Come on.
Ah, there you go, girl.
Deputy, I'm Cassie Warren, Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation. We also have Richard Abbi. I'm going to have him come up and stand next to me. And I also have three of my staff here, if you guys want to come up while I read it. As you. I've got Carla Mercado, she is our Parks Manager. Ashley Vlasic, she is our Special Events Manager. And Anthony Affetti, our Superintendent of Parks and Recreation here. And Eric wishes he could be here, but he's having fun in Greece. This proclamation reads, whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country and especially in the city of Dania Beach. And whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environment and well-being of our community. And whereas we recognize that quality of life starts in the parks, and the three pillars of the value of Parks and Recreation are coaching, connecting, and community. And whereas Parks and Recreation increase a community's economic perspective, or prosperity, sorry, through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas we recognize July as Parks and Recreation Month, we also recognize the vital contributions of employees and volunteers in public parks and recreation facilities who keep public parks clean and safe for visitors, organize youth and senior activities, provide health and fitness activities, offer learn-to-swim programs, plan special events, present cultural arts programs, provide social services, organize youth sports leagues, and advocate for more open space and better bikeways and trails. And whereas the city of Dania Beach Parks and Recreation Department is pleased and proud to offer programs and services that enhance the quality of life for residents and visitors, ensuring that Dania Beach remains an attractive place to see it, live it, and love it. Now, therefore, on behalf of the Dania Beach City Commission, I, Archibald J. Ryan the Fourth, Mayor of the city of Dania Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of July twenty-three as Parks and Recreation Month.
All right.
And I just want to say, as the video showed, you know, we've had a ton of exciting projects. We're in the midst of summer camp. We've sold out all three of our summer camps, all of our junior lifeguard programs. We're gearing up for the start of school, and the Rising Stars Aftercare Program is already sold out at one of our community centers. We expect it to sell out at the other two. It's in its third year only. And all of this could not be possible without the support of the staff behind me and the staff that couldn't be here tonight. So thank you, guys. Can we do a picture?
Yeah.
F R P A. F R P A does host the picture.
Yeah, we'll stay up here, you guys down there, we're doing two-tier. Thank you, Parks and Rec. Nothing but positivity coming out of that department right there. Lot of hard work, a lot of dedication, a lot of positive results. Okay, next, we have citizen comments. And I'd like to start with Mr. Donald Mincy. You could please come up, Mr. Mincy. State your name and address, sir. Wait till you get to the mic.
My name is Donald Mincy. I'm at three-two-seven Southwest Thirteenth Street. And I'm here to make a complaint about, you know, the little store that's right there across from my house, you know, about, you know, the drug addicts and the homeless people, you know, they're just all around my neighborhood and everything, like they about to take it over or something, you know. And I call the police from time to time, and every time I call them, they come out there. They might say something to them, but they telling me they can't do anything about it. Oh, they homeless, they this and they that, and da-da-da-da-da, yada, yada, yah. But, you know, I come home from work, they still out there. I wake up in the morning, people still out there at the store. The store closed, they still out there. They over there at the liquor store, they all up down the alleys, they just, you know. I mean, it's just getting to be unbearable now, you know. You know, I'm a taxpayer, I pay, you know, my taxes and everything. I pay my rent on time, and, you know, but, you know, they don't want to hear that. You know, nobody want to hear, like I say, the police tell me they can't do nothing, they can't make a move, they can't do anything, you know. So it ain't no point in calling the cops. So this was, this is my next step, coming to make my complaint, you know. And it's just getting to be overbearing, you know, you know, to me and my family and everything, you know. I'm not really sure what else to do, you know, so that's why I'm here.
Thank you, Mr. Mincy. So just to verify, your property address, three-two-seven Southwest Thirteenth Street?
Yes.
This is, this store is the Wardens?
Yeah, Too Quick, right on the corner there. It's right across from my house. I'm at a corner.
Yeah, so, yeah, and then.
South side.
And then you have the church.
Yes.
As well.
It's a laundry mat there, and, but, yeah, that whole, you know, they just took over that whole area there, you know. And like I say, the cops seem to can't do anything, you know. They've been making an effort to come out and do something. They saying they can't do anything about making a move or leave or just not being in the area, you know. So I'm not sure, you know, what's going on, but. And they out there all night, you know, sometimes fussing, arguing, and, you know, drinking beer all day. And then, you know, after a while, they got to go relieve themselves. So they just, you know, right there on the street in front of everybody, don't care if your wife or your kids coming out, and, you know, it's just getting to be unbearable, you know, before I end up doing something I'm going to regret, you know. And on top of all of that, I've been attacked, you know, when I come home from work. You know, when you call the cops, you know, they want to come to your house like they want them to know that you the one calling the police, you know. So I got home from work one night, and some guy, hey, you're the one been calling the police up here all the time. So he jumped on me and everything, you know. We had to end up fighting and tussling out there because they feel like, you know, I'm, you know, calling the police on them, you know, too much. But it's getting to be just overbearing right now, you know. So that's why I'm here, you know. I would like the police to try to do something, even if they can bring that little command center, what they have out there, you know, and put it on the end of the block or something, you know, to record all of the activity going around there, you know. That'd be a big help. That'd probably detour some of them from coming up there hanging out, you know. When I left to come up here, you know, people out there arguing about the fight, and, you know. And it's going on, you know, just about all day, every day, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Mincy. I appreciate you coming out here today. And this is an issue that we are aware of. You're not the only person to complain about this particular area in our neighborhood. And, you know, I can't speak on behalf of our new police chief, Terrala, but I know that this is a priority of his, and we've discussed it with him individually and, you know, as a commission and staff as well has discussed this with him. And, yeah, we definitely want to protect our residents, and you're one of our residents. And I know Terral is here, and Captain Terral is here, and we'll be happy to address this and speak with you on this issue. So thank you for coming out today. We appreciate your comments.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Terrence McElroy. Brother Mac, please state your name and address.
I'll give my government name. I'm Terrence McElroy.
I'll give my government name. I'm Terrence McElroy. Lighthouse Community Church, Lighthouse for Students. I'm here tonight really to say thank you. I'm always impressed when I come here. That video about Parks and Rec is certainly dear to my heart. We're certainly going to take our van, or we got a charter bus. I think we're going to take them there later this month. I didn't realize how developed and what they had done over there, and maybe because I don't get a chance to get over there often, but I was impressed with that presentation. But I'm also here to talk about the packets I gave you. You know, our program, Lighthouse for Students, you know, I know you guys will be leaving soon. I try not to give you too much to read. I just highlighted a few things. But on the very top page, we just took a canvas of fifty of our hundred and thirty students. And what we found out was that Lighthouse for Students is making a difference. We've raised reading and math scores up to eighty percent, boys and girls. I thought the girls would do better than the boys, but I was really confused. In fact, I told my staff to do the stats over. But what I am saying is our program works. We've been nominated once again for Program of the Year, Broward School, Broward Community Schools. And so we don't take it lightly for what we're doing. So other than saying thank you, and I'm sure as you get a chance to read all of the information that's there, I need you to also take a look at that last page. The last page has to deal with the statistics. I know I had to photo shoot it because I couldn't get the whole thing on a blank piece of paper. But it really, if you really look at it, you'll see that Florida is outdoing the rest of the country. But I want you to look closer at it. Look to the right, and you see that performance at performance, below level. We're under, we're below level. I don't care how much they say Florida's doing better than the rest of the country. They are. I even happened to take a look at Washington, D.C. Their scores are so bad, I mean, I couldn't believe it. It's worse than the nation. And so when you hear things that, the last report I got from Baltimore, no one in the school system in third, fourth, or fifth grade is at proficient reading or math. I mean, no one in this entire city. That's them. We're doing something different here in Florida, and we're thankful, glad that you guys are here. But you have to realize. That's it!
You got a little more time. You give him a little more time, Clerk.
Okay, all right, I'm going to be quick with this. What I'm trying to say is that we've been in Dania Beach doing this probably for the last eight years. We're being recognized from other places. In fact, if you read that, you'll see that Hollywood is trying to get us to come to Hollywood because of the stats. Most of the kids we are dealing with, they live in danger, but they're going to Hollywood schools. So it made sense. So my pitch to the mayor, and you'll see there's a schematic there on how much room we need. And we talked about all the new buildings that's going up. And why can't you build a community center right there? So I'm looking around the corner. You've got a low-income building getting ready to go up. Where are these kids going to go? And we said that if it's available, and this is what Hollywood is saying, we got new buildings going up, we want to talk to the contractor and see if they can cut out a space for you because those buildings are already going to have kids. They won't have to go anywhere. So it's something to consider, and we've asked before, either a community center, somewhere where we can expand this program in Dania Beach. There's the stats. We believe in what we're doing, and we can prove that we can raise students' math and reading scores. I know you gave me a little more time, I'm going to be quiet, but I got that pastor's thing in me. But I'm going to let it go. I really want to say thank you for what you've done for Lighthouse for Students, but I really need you to look at.